UBSUter.live's Local Government Live Streams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Now, we can be to open session. The time is 6:30 PM. We will now do the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Seth Simon, Vice President of the Board.
Please stand. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Announcements taken in closed session. Under expulsions, items EH-24-25-56 and item EH-24-25-65 was a unanimous vote to approve, 6-0. Under suspended expulsion contracts, items 6H-24-25-57 through 63, unanimous vote to approve. And stipulated expulsion contracts, item number EH-24-25-64 was unanimous approved. We'll now have comments from our board members. Mr. Stefan Fuerer. Dr. Yang. Oliver Taylor. Mr. Seth Simon. And student representative Norlina in Sing Sing May. No? At least I got the last name right. I said it right this time. Mr. Ricardo Galicia. And Mr. Frank Crawford. Okay, with that, we'll be moving over to comments from school site representatives. And we have Lynn Hurst High School here tonight. Yes, please approach and state your name. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Song, the ASB Secretary of Lynn Hurst High School, and here to bring you some LHS news. Starting with our leadership class this week, we are celebrating our VPs by doing acts of kindness for them all throughout the week. We also have kept up with our Fun Fridays each week to bring some culture to LHS. We had a guest speaker from Alcove with many of our students interested in joining a youth advisory group that is local. Now into FFA news, eight Lynn Hurst FFA members were recently awarded the State FFA Degree in Chico. Lynn Hurst FFA would like to say thank you to Acting Superintendent Mr. Reeves and LHS Assistant Principal Mrs. Arroyo Mangana for attending this prestigious event. Nine members recently attended the Clovis FFA Field Day to compete in horse judging, ag welding, and veterinary science. The horse judging team took first in the performance horse division, and freshman Ella Tikara took fourth overall out of 50 students. Lynn Hurst FFA had 27 students attend the Transformative California State FFA Leadership Conference in Sacramento last Thursday to Sunday. This event brought together nearly 10,000 FFA members in the Golden One Center. A big thank you to Mrs. Arroyo Mangana, Mrs. Strattan, and Mrs. Pasaglia for participating in the State FFA Administrator Experience, and a big thank you to Mr. Reeves for joining us in the MJSC Act Teachers on Friday of the conference. During the state conference, Erika Rivera Vargas competed in the California FFA State Spanish Creed Speaking Contest and was recognized on the stage in nearly, in front of nearly 10,000 people as the State Reserve Champion. Lynn Hurst FFA would like to say thank you to Jamie Larson, Becca Brolas, and Paula Satello for volunteering to judge various state-level contests as well. And lastly, during the conference, Elizabeth Silva was also able to take the big stage and be recognized for her role as a member of the coveted State FFA Nominating Committee. She spent hundreds of hours reviewing applications, conducting interviews, and creating the officer slate for those seeking the role of State FFA Officer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Representative from MCAA, Marysville Charter Academy of the Arts. Okay. Marysville High School.
Good evening. My name's Gabriela De Vargas. I'm the senior class president. My first of ASB leadership. Tomorrow, leaders will go to McKinnney to promote our leadership program to incoming freshmen. We have a lot of activities planned and an info session at the end. We've been planning for MORP this Friday and are very excited. There'll be a DJ, food trucks, and games. Next, we have some updates from our FFA chapter. Marysville FFA shines at the 97th Annual California State FFA Leadership Conference. The 97th Annual California State FFA Leadership Conference brought together over 7,500 FFA members from across the state for a powerful and inspiring week of leadership development. The conference featured keynote speakers, dynamic workshops, and motivational retiring addresses delivered by the California State FFA Officers. Sorry. Marysville FFA had an exceptional showing at this year's conference. We began by proudly supporting Hector Lucatero, who represented our chapter as one of the top 24 competitors in the state for the FFA Creed delivered in Spanish. His performance showcased not only his bilingual skills, but also his deep understanding of the values of FFA. In addition, three of our outstanding members, Caleb Gray, Hattie Morris, and Mary Campos, were selected to serve as a part of the FFA Courtesy Corps. This prestigious leadership role was awarded to students who demonstrated professionalism, reliability, and service, helping ensure events at the conference ran smoothly. Their efforts were organized, or were recognized on the main stage in front of thousands of attendees. Marysville FFA also earned high honors by submitting an application for the National Chapter Award, a rigorous process completed by our agricultural leadership students. We were proud to receive the Silver Award, with Leslie Cruz Lopez representing our chapter onstage. Furthermore, we placed top four in the state for the strengthening agricultural category for our impactful CTE Block Party Event, which educated our community on agricultural safety. Deanna Good took the stage to represent our team's hard work, which included an in-depth presentation and a formal interview process. Capping off our chapter's achievements, Nicholas Bump earned first place at the state level in his Outdoor Recreation Proficiency Award area. His project advanced through the sectional and regional levels before being selected as a top project in California. Nicholas's dedication and preparation paid off as he delivered a standout interview at the state level. Overall, the California State FFA Conference served as a source of inspiration and motivation for our members. It reinforced the importance of leadership, service, and kindness, and has invigorated our chapter continue to continue improving and leading with excellence. Thank you for your time. That is all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Gabriela. North and South Lynn Hurst High School? Okay, moving on to number eight. Opportunity for employer organizations to adjust the board. Marysville Unified Teachers Association, Ms. Angela Stiegel.
Good evening, Mr. Kredal, rest of the board. Angela Stiegel, President for the Marysville Unified Teachers Association. And I don't have a lot this evening. I know it's a shock. So, but a lot of good things, or a lot of like, kind of happy news. For one, spring break is almost upon us. It's so close, we can taste it. And even though it's a little early to start getting us all kind of like, you know, thinking along those lines, I don't want to like, give my seniors any more senioritis than they already have. But Miuta does hope that everybody is able to enjoy the spring break when we get there to it. Hopefully, people have time to get some rest, recharge the batteries a little bit before we come back and get to power through the last like, five weeks of the school year, which seems kind of crazy at this point in time because it almost kind of feels like we just started the school year. Also, since, well, actually, I'm going to stop. I'm going to hold off on one thing. I'm not sure how many people realize it, but we are pretty close to a holiday or a commemoration day that I think a lot of times gets overlooked in the midst of things. And that is on April 10th. April 10th is actually Dolores Huerta Day. And a lot of times, it gets overlooked. And a lot of people don't realize that Dolores Huerta actually started out her career as a teacher. And she realized that she could not tolerate, could not stand to watch hungry children coming to her class every day, and children who needed shoes. And so she actually decided that she could make more of an impact by actually going out and working to organize and assist with farm workers. And so she actually co-founded the National Farm Workers Association, which we all now know as the UFW. And so I was surprised when I realized that so many people didn't know that she started out as a teacher. But also then, as I was saying just a minute ago, we don't have a meeting again until May 13th. And between now and then, we actually have a lot of stuff that applies to us teachers. And so just some friendly reminders for folks to be thinking about the teachers in your lives, because May 5th actually kicks off Teacher Appreciation Week. So that entire week is Teacher Appreciation Week. May 6th is actually National Teacher Day. And May 7th is California Day of the Teacher, which is also School Nurses Day. And so just thought I would put some of those little friendly reminders out there, since we don't have another regular board meeting between now and then. Also, I would like to mention to the board, I know at the last meeting, we had an item pulled from the Consent Agenda, the CCAP Agreement. I would like to thank Mr. Reeves. He and I have met once to discuss that. I do see that it's back on the agenda, and I have put in a comment card for that, so that I will fill you in on a couple of things about that when we get to it. But we have at least had an initial conversation. Also, for Miuta, I would like to put a big shout out to Jennifer Pasalia and Denise Yards, and all of the people that are working behind the scenes on the various retro checks, and getting those explained to people, and answering all of the questions about them that are coming in. They have been very patient, very kind. Jennifer Pasalia sat down with myself and the bargaining co-chairs last week to run us through all of those and explain all of that to us, which was extraordinarily helpful. Gave up like, an hour and a half of an afternoon. And like I said, Denise and her team, they've been amazing and helpful. So thank you to all of them. And I believe that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Angela. Next, Operating Shares Union Local Number Three. California Schools Employees Association Number 326 and 648. Association of Management and Confidential Employees. Supervisory Unit. Okay, moving on to number nine. Public Comment. Persons wishing to address the board under public comments or a specific agenda item prior to the board taking an action must complete a public comments card and place it in the basket. Looks like one of these right here. Speakers will be invited to the podium in order to the, in the order the public comments cards were received. The public may address topics not on the agenda during this section of the agenda, or ask that they be heard during a specific agenda item. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes total time for public input on each item per Board by Law 9323. The Ralph Brown Act prevents the Board of Trustees from responding to these comments with the exception of clarifying questions. The California Government Code Section 54954.2A states, "No action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that members of a legislative body or its staff may briefly respond to the statements made or questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony rights under Section 54954.3." We will now hear public comments, and this first one here, and only one here tonight, is from Ms. Angela Stiegel. You're up, Angela. You have the floor.
Sorry, I wasn't expecting that, since I put it on for the particular agenda item. So I was a little unprepared. So, in regards to the consent agenda item, we still have a bit of an issue. I have read through every single word of the CCAP Agreement, and even besides or beyond the conversation between Mr. Reeves and myself, there are a couple of issues with the board approving this tonight, the very least of which being, eventually, when you get back through, I believe it's about page 25, 26 of that agreement, you will see the courses that are supposed to be offered, including college composition and reading, US history, elementary Spanish I, general biology, earth science, Spanish II. And then, we have a board policy, and in that board policy, it says, um, let's see, "Course shall be one that satisfies college entrance requirements, applies toward college-level general education requirements, part of a vocational career technical education course leading to a degree or certificate, and is not offered via district courses." Not offered. Hey, you want to know what we offer at Marysville High, and Lynn Hurst High, and all of our other schools? We offer biology, and English, and US history, and beyond that, there's also, on page 22, there's a little blank here, where we were supposed to have had an information and public comment board meeting, and the date for that is supposed to be on here. And it's blank, because that didn't happen. We have not had this posted as an informational item and had a public hearing with it. And then, in addition to that, on page 24, which this is supposed to be the renewal agreement, come to find out, this is for 23, 24. It's all the information we have here. Additionally, the board agenda says that there was no fiscal impact to this. Interesting, because the college is going to claim 47.3 of our students, that we then will not be able to claim for ADA, which is a fiscal impact. So I just wanted to point out that there still are some issues and some questions here. I also want to make 100% clear that myself, the teachers' union, not a teacher in this district, is against the CCAP. That's not it at all. We are not against dual enrollment. We want our students to have those opportunities and all. But we would like to make sure that it coincides with board policy, so that we don't end up approving an agreement that actually violates a board policy. But additionally, we would like to have an agreement between the teachers' union and the district before we implement a program, so that we don't have a repeat of a certain middle college issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Moving on to number 10, Superintendent Updates. Acting Superintendent, Mr. Jordan Reeves.
I do have a couple, real fast. Thank you to our school site reps for sharing out on your school. We really appreciate all the information you bring. And also, now, standing at the podium is not an easy thing to do. So again, thank you, guys. Also, I'd like to thank Lynn Hurst High School, Dr. Yang, and Mr. Simon, and myself on Thursday were able to visit extensively ROP and CTE courses. It was a great visit. A lot of really good things going on at Lynn Hurst, so we really appreciate that. Also, to reiterate, Lynn Hurst High School, just FFA, Erika Rivera Vargas was the Grand Reserve Champion. That's essentially second place in the entire state of California. So stated earlier, I think there were 7,500 FFA students there, probably close to 10,000 people in attendance. We know we live in a very large state, and to finish second in a competition, the runner-up is an amazing feat. So shout out to her for her Spanish Creed contest performance with regards to that. And one last thing, Marin County and other schools have come out, but Marin County came out about a week and a half ago to visit our child development classes. I met up with them at Linda Elementary. Shout out to not only the teachers and the classified and all the staff of that program, but also Director Julie Critchfield for essentially creating a model preschool child development program. So again, it's something that this district, this community can be proud of. And when our kids are learning at such an early age, the benefits long-term are astronomical, and especially for our community. So again, congratulations to our early child development program.
Thank you, Jordan. Moving on to item 12, Superintendent. Item 12.1, Approval of the March 25th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting Minutes. We'll now need to approve the minutes from the March 25th, 2025 Regular Minute Meeting. Are there any noted corrections from the board? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 25th, 2025? Motion from Seth Simon, and a second. Second from Mr. Fuerer. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I have an abstention from Mr. Crawford. Thank you. Motion carries. 12.2, Approval of the March 27th, 2025 Special Board Meeting Minutes. We will now approve the minutes from the March 27th, 2025 Regular Meeting. Are there any noted corrections from the board? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 25th, 2025 Meeting? Motion from Mr. Simon, and a second. Thank you, Mr. Galicia. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We have two abstentions, one from Mr. Crawford, and one from Mr. Fuerer. Noted. And motion carries. 12.3, Approval of the April 3rd, 2025 Special Board Meeting Minutes. We will now approve the minutes from the April 3rd, 2025 Regular Meeting. Are there any noted corrections from the board? If not, pardon? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 25th, 25? And I got a motion from Mr. Oliver Taylor. Do I have a second? Oh, Mr. Yang, a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? To the abstentions, Mr. Fuerer. And I believe, Mr. Crawford? Yes. I have two abstentions. Motion carries. Moving on to item 12.4, Approval of the Consent Agenda Items, pages 7 through 18. We will now approve the Consent Agenda Items, 15.1 through 17.5. Is there any item that the board would like to pull for further clarification at this time? Mr. Yang?
I'll pull for clarification for 15.4.
Say it one more time?
15.4, which is CCAP Agreement.
15.4, pull for clarification? Anyone else?
Yeah, so, Jordan, can I get those four issues that was brought up, assuming that I wrote the notes correctly, that was brought up? So for example, for the courses that's being offered by the district that's part of the CCAP Agreement? The first item, which is, that was brought up. Sorry. Can I, I'm going to repeat it, so that, online can hear. So can I get a clarification from the district on the items that were brought up by Angela Stiegl's in regards to the CCAP Agreement? So the first item is overlap courses between the district and the college. It's from page 25 to 26.
I'm bringing it up as you speak. And question was as far as clarification?
Yeah, there's four items. So I'm going to go through all four items.
Okay.
So the first item is overlap of courses offered by the CCAP Agreement and the district. So the assertion is that those courses cannot be part of the CCAP Agreement, right? And an example she brought up was, for example, US history?
It's correct.
That is correct?
No, I'm sorry, ask the question. I was just saying correct to US history.
So is it correct, or is it true that we're not allowed to have those courses as part of the dual enrollment, enrollment agreement?
So, and again, I just want to make sure and clarify, understand what you're essentially asking. So is the course at Marysville High School the same as the course at UBA College? I'm just...
Well, the board policy says that, and I'm going to pull up the board policy that, and thank you, Angela, for noting those board policies. The board policy and the actual statement is, let me look, is, I think, I believe it's in 16.1, I believe. And it says, the actual wording of it, I'm looking for it under college courses, and, to, to, my apologies, I didn't expect this to come up, but the wording is, on it says that we're not allowed to have course credit for something that's offered at the district, right? And I'm looking for the wording itself.
Yeah, so then it's not offered via district courses per board policy.
Yeah, so my question then is that, is the US course offered at the district, at one of our comprehensive high schools versus the college, would that be equivalent? Meaning that a US history offered at the high school, the same as the dual enrollment US history that's offered at...
I don't think they'd be equivalent, because a high school course is not the same as a college course. You wouldn't get credit at a college for a high school course. You'd get credit for a college course at a high school. I don't know if that's answering your question.
So is it your belief then, that we're not in violation of that wording then?
Well, I think it all depends on how you essentially look at it, but trying to answer your question, if you take a dual enrollment course, it certainly counts for a high school course, hence dual enrollment. I know you know that. But if you take a high school course, it doesn't count towards college as far as at the same time.
Okay, so it's not equivalent in course stature. Is it equivalent in terms of the wording and the bylaws?
Well, the bylaw, the board policy says it's not offered via district courses. So the college course is not essentially offered at the high school course, but you would get credit for the high school course.
So let me, let me clarify that then. If a remedial course, right, that is equivalent to a high school course, is put onto the CCAP Agreement, would that be violation of the board bylaws?
So remedial course at community college, since we're speaking to UBA College?
Correct.
Okay, if that, and ask the question again, I'm sorry.
Correct. If a remedial course, right, a remedial course, let's say, in English or math, that would qualify for a high school course, would that be considered equivalent?
I don't think you'd get credit for a remedial course at the high school level.
So it's, it's not even, so the position would be is that all of the courses at UBA College are not equivalent then? What's the issue?
The issue is that you have a board policy that states right here as far as college courses. There's nothing about equivalency. But I will tell you, US history is US history. If we're going to allow a student to go to UBA College and take US history out there, so that they then do not have to take US history at Marysville High, or Lynn Hurst High, or the Charter School, or whatever, you are in violation of your board policy. High or the Charter School or whatever, you are in violation of your board policy. The board policy says nothing about any equivalency. So if you want to go down that road, we can gladly do it because that will actually be an even bigger problem. Because we also have state testing and we have state standards that we do not have at UBA College nor Chico State or anywhere else. They are totally different. But I'll tell you, US History should be US History. I'm gonna count to three before I finish that off in the current political climate, but US History should be US History. And if you're going to give credit for it, you are in violation of your own board policy. And so same thing with English 1A. We have students who are not taking senior English at either Lynn Hurst High or Marysville High because they are taking English 1A at UBA College because of the CE cap agreement and they're getting the credit for it so that they don't have to take it there. It is a violation of your policy. It's pretty simple and straightforward. I still have yet to figure out why it is that we want to try to dance around the subject or why we want to try to come up with some questions that'll get around the issue. I'm not saying that anybody and everybody here is necessarily, you know, trying to do some, you know, near or do well or whatever, but somehow this has slipped through the cracks. I don't know why we can't make an admission of that at this point in time and why we can't manage then to fix it. Why can't we fix your CE cap? Why can't we manage to bargain things between the district and the union before they get here, before we have to have these issues? It just, it makes zero sense to me. And why I have to sit here and, you know, holler out in the middle of a board meeting like this is just beyond me and just bizarre. It's not a question of equivalency, it's a question of you have a very simple board policy, one for which you've been violating for at least the last four or five years consistently, for which this union has brought up to the board and the district consistently that it's been violated. On top of that, you're violating your agreements that you have with the union, which by the way I'll also mention, we just settled a tentative agreement and within that, we settled three unfair labor practice charges, two of which this board okayed and said that you are not going to continue to implement policies and programs without first negotiating them with the union. Like, how much have we learned? That was just a month and a half ago. Like, this isn't complicated. We're trying to work this out, but it really doesn't lend itself to having a whole lot of faith when we're already really kind of bordering up against violating agreements we just came to not six, eight weeks ago for these ULPs. And we're trying, like I said, Mr. Reeves and I have already met to try to work on this. This is your policy, this is your CE cap, that anybody could have read and caught these things. Am I necessarily faulting all of you that you didn't catch it? Am I necessarily faulting anybody here in the DO that they didn't catch it? No, not necessarily, but what I'm saying is, is let's fix it and let's fix it right. Instead of coming up with 19 questions where we can try to, you know, I don't know, pick it apart to the extent that, well, now we can say that it doesn't violate our policy. It most assuredly does. And you can easily fix it and easily remedy it, just like you can also easily fix and remedy the fact that you are skating on really thin ice in regards to continuing to violate agreements that you made with us in our tentative agreement in February. It's not difficult. I mean, let's rebuild a relationship here and make this happen. I thought that's what we were supposed to be doing after we came to this tentative agreement and managed to get through mediation.
Yeah, come on up.
Hi, I'm Alicia Wright, Principal of Marysville High School. I hope that as you're considering things, part of the consideration can be perhaps why we've been making these allowances over the past few years. What are the benefits that these courses bring to students as far as being able to obtain an AA degree that they cannot get with high school level English or US History? And I hope that part of the discussion isn't just union versus board, but maybe how you can be creative in solving this problem. If the issue with having the courses at the college links to the fear, and correct me if I'm wrong, of teacher positions being eliminated or removed, perhaps part of this discussion can be that you look at the overall enrollment of the school by grade level. And then those class sizes or those course sections are based on the total enrollment of 11th grade English or 12th grade English or US History. And then in a roundabout way, it would benefit our teachers because their class sizes would go down and they would be able to give better, more diverse, differentiated instruction to those students who maybe are not at the ability of taking college level courses. And teachers are not reduced, sections are not reduced, but students can benefit that are in our comprehensive schools as well as the ones that want to advance themselves and partake in some of these advanced college level classes. I hope you'll consider that.
I'm gonna entertain Mrs. White's statement. The FTE equivalency that it impacts is really 45 FTEs, right? I am assuming I wrote it right. Forty-seven, forty-seven point three, so let's round out forty-eight, forty-eight FTEs, so forty-eight headcounts. Now, the impact is greater because that's hours, right, and not number of students. So a whole host of students are impacted by the CE cap agreement. But we're basically talking about a reduction of FTE of 48 kids. Right? If I understand FTE correctly, right?
So when we do allocations for FTE, we, as misread, as stated or requested, we take a look at the total enrollment for the school and we would not subtract out the 47 from the number. So if Marysville hypothetically had 1,100 kids, we wouldn't subtract 47 from that and base the FTE allocations at the 47 subtracted from the 1,100, it'd be the 1,100. I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so, so there's no impact on subtracting that 47 out of the total headcount from the school then? Is that, based on your answer?
Yeah, we don't subtract out.
So, so basically, what that would mean is, is that the sections would just have less number of kids?
No.
Mathematically?
Not necessarily, because none of this is in writing. We have a contract that says certain numbers. And I will tell you right now, I've already said this, this is not about the teachers' union being against the CE cap, it's not about us being against dual enrollment, it's not that at all. We are for dual enrollment, that's why we're asking, that we want to get an agreement together. But if you've read that full CE cap, there are all kinds of things in there that impact my unit. There are things about evaluation, there are things about stipends. Funny that we can't get a stipend for girls' flag football added to the stipend schedule without bargaining it, but yet within the CE cap, you supposedly can all of a sudden just add a stipend for somebody there. That's not how this works, that has to be bargained. You know, we can't have it both ways. You can't have it where we have to bargain some things and we don't bargain other things. You know, that's not how this works at all. And I appreciate what Mrs. Wright just said, but this isn't about pitting the teachers against the students. I will tell you already, in the time that we have had some of these issues going on with dual enrollment, where the district has been violating their own agreement plus past practice with us, we have lost sections. And we're just going to keep going down that slippery slope. We have class sizes in our contract. But this is all the reasons why we need this in our contract. We aren't saying we don't want to bargain it. I don't know how much clearer I can be. Like I said, I've already met with Jordan about this once, just in the two weeks since we've had another board meeting. So this isn't about the union saying, no, we don't want a CE cap, no, we don't want dual enrollment. What we want is for there to be an agreement so that we can protect our teachers, so that we can protect our courses, so that we can protect all of our courses and classes and class sizes for all of our students, not just my teachers, for my students. Because just like our shirts say, my, my working conditions are my students' learning conditions. That's being saying, we want to have an agreement on this. But it's really hard to kind of have a lot of faith at this point in time that we can stand up here and talk about, yeah, you know, it won't reduce the numbers and it'll actually make the classes smaller. That has not borne out across the board in this district. It has not. We have things that we have lost. Also, one of the classes that's on there now is Intro to Film. I, I don't know that we have the population to pull off Intro to Film as a college course that kids can go off and take at UBA College, but also take at Lynn Hurst High, for instance. We don't have the enrollment for that. So then we risk losing Intro to Film if we don't do something like have a written agreement beforehand. I'm not saying no to it, MUDA is not saying no to it. I don't know, like, do I have to scream it from the mountaintops? I, I don't know what else to say, except for the fact that we want an agreement on this. But we keep ending up in this situation where this board passes something and then it's, oh yeah, we'll get to the agreement later. I, I hate to keep bringing up a really sore subject, but the Middle College is the perfect example. We told the board that we needed to have an agreement on the Middle College before and it didn't happen. You believed a superintendent who strangely enough, isn't here anymore, imagine that. You bought that bill of goods that was completely rotten and then what ended up happening? You went ahead and went through with the Middle College and it was nothing but a train wreck from day one, which was, we didn't have any written agreements on anything. And so then it ended up in unfair labor practice charges and lawyers involved and all that. We don't want to do that. That's what we're asking for. It's like, hey, let's prevent all of that and let's have this be something positive where we can actually sit down and come to an agreement beforehand and we can also make sure that we end up with a CE cap that doesn't violate board policy all at the same time and then have this be beneficial for our students all the way across the board? That's what we're asking for. We're not asking you to say no to a CE cap across the board, we're asking you to say yes to a CE cap that goes by your policy and goes by a contract. That's it. It should be simple, that's how it's supposed to work out, just FYI, you bargain things first, then you implement them, not the other way around. Let's stop trying to build an airplane while we're flying it and falling out of the sky. That'd be kind of nice.
So, so Jordan, the statute for CE cap has been around since 2016. So I'm assuming that Marysville Joint Unified School District's CE cap agreement with UBA College is roughly the same time?
No.
It's not? So, so it would be at least almost a decade, right? Even if we delayed it, was there an existing impacts and effects agreement with MUDA when that program started up?
I'm not aware of that.
So, so there's currently no impact and effect agreement on it then?
I, I don't think so, that's what we're essentially trying to bargain.
Except for past practices. So this, this is a renewal contract, meaning that, I'm assuming that there's nothing changed from the previous contract, right? And notes it in here, this is a renewal of the contract that's from, what year is it? Is it notes in the, in the contract that the prior contract was from 21, 24, right? So it was signed in 21, from a previous superintendent, previous, previous superintendent. So there's, there was no bargaining in 21 when this contract was signed. Is that correct? Is that?
I don't know, I was not here in 2021.
There is a side letter. So, so there's, there's a side letter that expired. So what happens, what's the process when there's a side letter that expires? Bargaining?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna motion to table the, the 15.4.
Mr. Yang has pulled item 15.4 for discussion. Item 15.4 is pulled for discussion, may have a motion to approve consent agenda items 15.1 through 17.5, with the exception of item 15.4. Do I have a motion? Mr. Crawford? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, after, after the discussion's been pulled, do we have a motion to approve the consent item number 15.4 that was pulled for discussion?
Motion approved.
You have a motion to approve item 15.4, Mr. Crawford? Do we have a second?
A motion.
A motion to, I, yeah. Yeah, not if I have, if I don't get a second, I have to pull it. Okay.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. I don't have a second and Mr. Crawford withdraws the motion, so with that, the motion is dead at the moment. Do we have a, Mr. Yang, you, you pulled this, do you have, do you have a direction?
Yeah, I, I, I would like to have it pulled and Jordan come back with some, some sort of agreement for impacts and?
Timeline.
Well, that would be up to Jordan and UBA College when the CE cap agreement actually wipes out our dual enrollment program at MJUSD.
Then can I get a motion for someone to approve that we table this and use Mr. Yang's direction to our superintendent, Mr. Jordan Reeves, to investigate this? Motion from Mr. Steeman, okay? Do I have a second? I got Mr. Taylor, I think, first, sorry. All in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Everyone opposed for Mr. Crawford. Motion carries that we will table this item. We gone to number 18, new business, superintendent business. 18.1, complete the first read of board policies, administrative regulations and exhibits for section 7,000, which is our facilities.
Hi, good evening, thank you. Yes, this is the first read for board policies in the 7,000 section, as you just said, for facilities. We'll come back on the 13th of May and ask for you to approve those updates. These follow the CSBA guidelines and similar to last, in February, when I brought forward the 3,000s.
And this, by the way, is an informational only motion, so, okay. Number 21, new business personnel. 21.1, approve the tentative agreement between MJUSD and supervisory unit.
Good evening. This is, the district and the supervisory unit agreed to the attached TA, the articles which have been the subject of negotiations through the 2023, 24 and 24, 25 school years. And this is salary and benefits and this is an action item and the recommendation is that the board approve.
Do I have any questions from the board members? With that, can I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement?
Motion.
Hold on a second. Can I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement between MJUSD and the supervisory unit?
Same motion.
Motion by Mr. Crawford, thank you, Mr. Crawford. Motion's made by Mr. Crawford, do I have a second? Mr. Oliver Taylor? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 21.2, approve the tentative agreement between MJUSD and CSEA, chapter number 326.
Similarly, this item is for the CSCA 326 TA, which concludes negotiations again for the 23, 24, 24, 25 school years and it is recommended the board approved, approve the attached TA.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Can I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement between MJUSD and CSEA, chapter number 326? Motion from Mr. Fuhrer and a second. Mr. Yang on a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, oh no. Thank you, everyone. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for May 13, 2025. This meeting is now adjourned.
UBSutterlives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of UBA.